Hey, good evening, everyone, and make welcome to the November tenth twenty twenty-two meeting of the Cupertino Planning Commission. May I have a roll call, please?
Good evening, Chair Sharf. Pugos is not available right now, but she will be coming later, so I will take her spot to do the roll call. So Chair Sharf presents.
Yes.
Vice President Madipatla?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Wong?
Here.
Commissioner Capil?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxena? Thank you. We have all five present.
Okay, very good. So our first item of business, you know, I'm having trouble bringing the agenda up. Can you put it up on the screen, maybe? Is that Luke? I don't remember. Who?
I can do that, or?
Okay.
John, would you like to?
Oh, sorry, it's John. Okay. Okay, yeah, if you can just scroll down a little bit. Okay. Okay, I don't think there's any postponements, so we are on to oral communications.
Chair, I believe there's approval of minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Right, yeah, I didn't see that. Okay, right, so our first item is to approve the minutes from our last planning commission meeting of October twenty-fifth. So if you can take a second to read those minutes and entertain a motion to approve them. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the minute from October twenty-fifth Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, so can we have a second? Yes.
Second.
Okay, wonderful. So let's have a roll call vote on the minutes.
But Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, some?
Yeah, before we take the roll call vote, you want to see whether members of the public would like to comment?
Oh, I am sorry, I?
That was what I was suggesting.
We had that we're supposed to allow comment on that, so. Let me go to participants. Attendees, I do not see anybody wishing to comment on the minutes, so we can have a vote then.
Commissioner Capil?
Yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Commissioner Madipatla?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wong?
Abstain.
Chair Sharf?
Aye.
Motion carries four zero one.
Yeah. Pugh, vice chair is me.
I did realize that as soon as I said it, apologies.
No, it's, yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed that. What was that?
I miscalled the vice chair's name.
Oh, okay, whatever. Okay. All right, now we're on to oral communications. This is for members of the public to address the planning commission on any item not on the agenda that is under the purview of the planning commission. And each person will get three minutes, so please raise your hand in Zoom. The attendees. Okay, I do not see any hands raised. Oh, there goes one. Okay, welcome, Jean Gasparini. You need to unmute.
Hi. I'm having a hard time hearing this.
Yeah, we cannot hear you. There's a huge echo.
Right, 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 right. I don't know if I joined your address.
If you can turn off your laptop microphone, that will help.
Turn off. But maybe I should leave and come in again. Maybe I joined twice.
Yeah, it sounds like you logged in twice.
Okay, let me leave.
Oh, I do, because I see you here twice.
Okay, I'll go out and see what happens.
So, okay, now one of them is gone, so now I will allow you to talk again. Okay, go ahead.
All right, so my name is, actually, Stephen, I'm not sure if I should be speaking now because I want to speak about the Marina Plaza development.
And I think that's? This is not the time because that is on the agenda.
Just let me know when the time is, okay?
Right, right, that's actually the only other item on the agenda, so.
Yes.
It will be coming very soon. Okay, so see, let me check one more time. No one has their hand raised for oral. Let me go back to the agenda. Okay, there's nothing on consent. So we are on to item two, consider development permit tentative map and architectural and site approval to consider the demolition of approximately forty-four thousand square feet of existing commercial and the construction of three mixed-use buildings with approximately forty-one thousand two hundred sixty-eight feet of commercial space and two hundred and six condominium units and a tree removal permit to allow the removal and replacement of ninety-two trees. The applicant is also requesting a density bonus and density bonus waivers for height setbacks and common open space. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chair Sharf, good evening. I would like to introduce John Martier, senior planner, who will be presenting for this item tonight.
Great.
All right, good evening. Can you all see my screen and the presentation?
We do.
All right, great. I'm actually doing this from home tonight. I usually have three big screens and I only have one big one, one little tiny one, so. It's good to know. Okay, so yes, I guess I'm John Martier, senior planner with the planning division within the community development department. And I've been the project manager for the Marina development since end of August. And so I'm pleased to bring this to the forefront of the planning commission to the Cupertino community. So as Chair Sharf had explained, the subject of this, of this product, of this item is the Marina Plaza project, which is to consider the development permit tentative map and architectural site approval to consider demolition of the existing Marina Plaza, which is approximately forty-four thousand square feet of retail and the construction of three mixed-use buildings with approximately forty-one thousand square feet of retail and two hundred and six condominium units and the tree removal permit to remove and replace the ninety-two development trees. The applications, as discussed, were the development permit with an addendum to the prior mitigated negative declaration, architectural site approval, vesting tentative map, and a tree removal permit. So here's the project location. As you can see, there's two parcels, one larger one and one smaller one. The larger one is the current location, Marina Foods, with the smaller one being the on corner of Alves Drive and North Deanza Boulevard, where the Mandarin gourmet restaurant is located at. There's four streets that are adjacent to this development, Stevens Creek Boulevard to the south, again, North Deanza to the east, Alves to the north, and Banley Drive to the west. Surround the site is a whole mix of uses within the heart of the city's specific plan and in this north crossroads node. To the north across Alves, you have the Apple Cafeteria as well as Aloft Hotel. Across Banley, you have a mixture of fourplexes as well as retail. Stevens Creek is, of course, you have retail at the crossroad center across the street from that and adjacent to the south of this site, as well as you have the Apple Office Building to the south and the banks in the banks of America. And to the east, you have Saint Joseph's Catholic Church and the northeast Single Family. So this has been identified as a priority housing site and currently in the draft of the new housing element, this is a pipeline project. In the, in the current housing element, this was allocated two hundred use based on the realistic capacity of eighty-five percent of maximum capacity. When this project came in in March of this year, this was SB three thirty application. SB three thirty applications can only be reviewed for their conformance to objective standards and what limits the decision-making bodies to any subjective standards at all. It also limits certain, certain things like the amount of meetings we can have when reviewing this project is limited to five, and so on and so forth. So the project data, as discussed, there's three residential, commercial, mixed-use buildings, building A, B, and C. I'll go over that on the site plan within the next few slides. Building A is a five-story building with fifty-six condominium, residential condominiums and ninety-three hundred square feet of ground for retail. Building B is a four-story building with eighty-six condo, residential condos and twenty-two thousand square feet of retail. And building C is a five-story building with sixty-four residential condominiums and about ninety-four hundred square feet of retail. There is one level below garage, below-ground garage under each building with approximately four hundred and twenty parking spaces. There'll be a hundred and seventy-one onsite, offsite, onsite, offsite, excuse me, tree replacements for the ninety-two that will be removed. And the vesting tentative map will actually merge both parcels, so you really have just one large parcel and with the residential condominiums coming in later under a condo map. So here's the site, as you see. We have building A located right here in the northwest, north, excuse me, northeast of the property on the corner, on the southeast corner of North Deanza and Alves Drive. Building B, right here, is on the northwest portion of the side on the southeast corner of Banley and Alves. And then finally you have building C, which is on the southern end of the project. Where you have also just along the easement, the easement that connects between Stevens Creek and to the rest of the project. And then you have Banley, North Deanza, Stevens Creek, and Alves. So if this Marina Plaza development sounds familiar, it's because it should be. This was approved, a prior version of this was approved in twenty sixteen. This, but that development was slightly different. They had a hundred and eighty-eight apartments, approximately twenty-two thousand six hundred square feet of commercial space, a hundred and twenty-two-room hotel. And the council at the time did approve a five-year DA and project with the project approval that went from September twentieth, twenty sixteen, and expired on September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. So as was shown in the staff reports, what were, what are the differences? So here's a comparison table to show what was approved back then and what is proposed now. As you see, we have almost doubled the amount of commercial for this project as was the last time. No hotel this time around. In terms of residential, we had a hundred and eighty-eight apartments and now they're proposing two hundred and six condominiums. BMR units, in twenty sixteen, there were sixteen very low-income units, whereas now we are, not we are, excuse me, the developers proposing thirty-six units, eighteen median income units and eighteen moderate income. Building heights at the time were around maximum to forty-five feet, whereas now they vary between forty-four and fifty-eight and a half feet. And the building area is, is a little bit, quite a bit larger. Where it was three hundred and ninety thousand square feet in twenty sixteen, we have about five hundred and seventy thousand square feet proposed now. So this part of this application is a density bonus with the waiver request that the applicant is entitled to. As they are proposing twenty percent affordable as standard with any for-sale residential unit development, they are entitled to at least a fifteen percent density bonus. And so which, which will allow them by law twenty-seven units to be added to the base density of one hundred and seventy-nine units, or that's how they come up with the two hundred and sixty units there. So again, per, excuse me, per state law, an applicant may request waivers or reduction of development standards that will have the effect of physically precluding construction of a density bonus development. No incentives or concessions are being requested at this time. So the first waiver has to do with the height of the structure. So two of the buildings, one of the buildings, excuse me, building B is coming in at forty-four feet, which is within the forty-five-foot limits of the general plan. Building A and building C are coming in above with building A being proposed at the roof line or parapet line at fifty-eight and a half feet, where building C is about fifty-five feet at the roof line. As you see here, this is sections of both buildings A and C. As you see, the green hashed are, so the red, this red line right here kind of shows where the forty-eight-foot line would be if you were going to draw it across, across the two sections. The green hashed is the top floors, so if the, if the, if the developer were to adhere to the forty-five-foot limit, they would not be able to add those top floors to this development. Setbacks. So the side setbacks within the heart of the city are determined this way. So a side setback is determined either the minimum of one-half of the height of the building or at the very minimum of ten feet, whichever is greater. So building B again is conforming to the side setbacks with a hundred and two feet. That's not the street setback. The street setback is thirty-five feet, which all three buildings are meeting. So the hundred and two feet is from the, from the closest interior line to the south. Building A has a ten-foot side setback. And building C has a twenty-two and a half side setback. And for building A, the requirement because of its height would, would have to be twenty-eight and a half feet, where building C would have to be twenty-seven and a half feet. And all these tables were taken straight from the staff report. Here we go. Okay, so here's an exhibit that the developer, developers architect put together to show how the, how if the side setbacks were going to be implemented per the ordinance without the waivers, how much of effective development. You can see the outline of the, of the units, and this is on the, taken from the fourth residential floor of the three buildings. So we have building A right there. And you see building C, and what they're trying to demonstrate with this exhibit is how how the side setbacks, if being orthodox to the ordinance, would, would take out at least three units on building A per floor and about, about seven units per floor on, on building, building C. And the last waiver they're requesting is for residential common open space. The way is calculated in the heart of the city is that each, each unit has, so the common open space for each is calculated, the residential common open space is calculated by multiplying the unit by a hundred and fifty square feet. And so what would be required is thirty thousand nine hundred square feet, and what is proposed with the development is thirty thousand two hundred and sixty-six square feet, so approximately six hundred feet, square feet deficient with the residential common open space. So the justification, the main justification for the waivers is essentially if these, if these standards were applied orthodoxly to this, to this project without the waivers, there would be substantial loss of units that they would be entitled to with this development. The height, it was calculated, the height waiver, if, if applied at the forty-five-foot limit, there'd be a loss of thirty units between buildings A and C. If the side setbacks were applied between A and C, you would lose approximately eight units per floor in buildings A and C and for overall combined, at least thirty units. Common open space, they calculated about five units from the project total, building A, three units, building B, two units, and building C, one unit. So I should actually read six. I apologize, my math is horrible. So. Let's see here. So in order for the city council or this decision-making body to deny a waiver or incentive concession, there's three findings that they would have to make. These findings are that the waiver or incentive concession would have adverse impact on real property listed in the California Register of Historic Resources, that the waiver or incentive concession would have a specific adverse impact upon public health or safety or the physical environment, and there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid this specific adverse impact without rendering the residential project unaffordable to low and moderate income households. And finally, that the waiver or incentive concession is contrary to state or federal law. Through the, in the staff report, we, we described how it would be difficult to make any of those three findings. That's one, because this is not a, not on a historic resource or a California registered landmark or near one. The addendum to the MND has proven that this, that any impact could be mitigated to less than significant and that the waiver is not contrary to state or federal law. Our, the city of Cupertino's BMR manual talks quite a bit about BMR, the low-market rate compatibility with the with the market rate housing. There were several exhibits within the staff report, another staff report, still within the the plan sheets that demonstrated the dispersal, dispersion of the units throughout the project. You do have units throughout the project on each floor. Most of them, they all are conforming to the amount of bedrooms and size as the rest of the, of the market rate units. This table I found very helpful from the applicant in that the average bedroom count and average gross area is pretty much equal to what the market rate units are in terms of two-point-four, the average bedrooms are about two-point-four bedrooms and the average size is about thirteen hundred square feet. And you can see the moderate and the median income BMR units are around that as well. Parking lot analysis. So the city's density bonus ordinance as well as state law allows an applicant to ask for a reduction of parking standards if they are providing BMR units on site. As you can see, that the calculation for the residential condos is as followed. If it's a one-bedroom unit, they allow one onsite space. So if there's two to three bedrooms, one and a half onsite spaces. If it's four bedrooms, it's two-point-five space per unit. There's no four-bedroom unit, so we'll just focus on the one to two. So they're required to provide two hundred and ninety-six per this calculation and they are providing, going to be provided approximately three hundred and, I'm sorry, they're required to provide three hundred and five units, and they're going to be providing about three hundred and thirty-eight. For the retail, it's one space per two hundred and fifty square feet. And so with that calculation, they would be required to do a hundred and sixty-six spaces and they are provided two hundred and sixty-nine. Just to be a hundred percent transparent, the applicant did suppose that few of those units will be restaurants, so they incorporated some seating counts and whatnot in various spaces, whatever else. So that is in the anticipation that many of these commercial units would actually be occupied by cafes and eating establishments. So that buffer was in there to, to account for that. Tree removal and replacements. They, again, they're removing ninety-two trees with a hundred and eighty-four trees, a hundred and thirty-six onsite and forty-eight offsite. Of those, thirty-nine will be twenty-four-inch box crate, twenty-four-inch box crate murals. The street tree pallets that are required from Public Works are twenty-four, twenty-four-inch box england oaks along Stevens Creek and Deanza Boulevards, sixteen twenty-four-inch box silver linden along Alves Drive and eight twenty-four-inch box Brisbane box trees along Banley Drive. Again, the vesting tentative map would merge the two lots to create one five-point-one acre parcel. The consolidated parcel will include a condominium map for two hundred and six residential condominiums. And a condition of approval has been added to the VTM that would require dedication, reciprocal easements, ensuring cross-axis between the parcels for emergency vehicles and public. A little bit about the architectural design. One of the things about this development is the design is consistent throughout the site. As you see, this is a view looking down south along South, North Deanza Boulevard. You see the Apple Office Building in the, in the background. This is, this is a view coming in from the entrance along Alves, Alves Drive. And this is a rendering and perspective of the interior roundabout to show the mixed-use building. I believe that's building C. And the applicant has a very detailed presentation. I'll go more into depth about, you know, existing, let's say they're existing and what's proposed and whatnot, and some of the applicant developer, developer's architect. The environmental review, as discussed prior on September sixth, twenty sixteen, the city of Cupertino adopted initial study mitigated negative declaration, will cause the twenty sixteen MND. The city consultant, Placeworks, completed an addendum to the twenty sixteen MND in accordance to secret guidelines section one five one six four, which covers how to complete an addendum and when an addendum is necessary, rather than going through a whole new MND. The construction operation of the modified project would not result in any, what was found, rather, was a construction operation of the modified project would not result in any new impacts or increase the severity of previously identified significant impacts analyzed and adopted MND from twenty sixteen. We do have two staff members from Placeworks in attendance as well that can answer more detailed questions about the secret analysis, the process, the addendum specific. So this, as SB three thirty application and as a residential, as a, as a development that has two-thirds of the square footage dedicated to residential development, this, this would fall under the Housing Accountability Act. And just as a, as a, as a discussion of what that means as it pertains to this project, this limits the ability of the city to deny or impose certain conditions on a housing development project when a project implies with applicable objective general plan zoning and subdivision standards criteria. The project is a housing development project under HHA because it is a mixed-use development consisting of residential and non-residential uses with at least two-thirds of the square footage designated for residential use. And a project is either considered, consistent with the city's objective standards or has applied for waivers and or incentive concessions under the density bonus law. Again, the city has within its right to disprove the project if the project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety unless a project is disapproved or approved upon the condition that the project be developed at a lower density. And no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid the adverse impact exists. And again, MND had been completed and was intended to that show that all, any, any impacts can be mitigated to less than significant. A few, a couple modifications to feel the conditions of approval of the development. Um a few, a couple modifications uh to few of the conditions of approval of the development permit. Um two of them, a condition of approval number twelve references to senior units, and that should be removed. This is not senior development. Uh and the condition of approval thirteen D's revised to an ownership project, not rental. So those are two modifications to the development permit uh resolution. The applicant has done significant outreach um since uh over the spring and summer, actually, starting in January, then continuing through the spring and summer and into fall this year. Um in January, uh the applicant had done a meeting with the city delegations and eight guests attended um on April second and thirteenth of this year. Uh residential commercial office property owners within two thousand feet of the site were invited to Aloft Hotel with eighteen members of the public attending, where they were able to view the project plans and ask questions um and give feedback to the development, excuse the developer. And August fifth and eighth of this year, uh residential commercial property owners within two thousand feet of the site were invited to Aloft Hotel, twenty-three members of the public had attended. Um again, the applicant can can discuss these outreach efforts more in detail as they are in tents as well. Conclusion is that the staff recommends approval of the project because the project and conditions of approval address concerns related to the proposed development and all of the findings for approval of the proposed project consistent with chapters fourteen point one-eight, eighteen point two-eight, nineteen five-six, nineteen one-five-six, and nineteen one-six-eight Cupertino Municipal Code could be made. Concerning developments, heights, side setback, and common open space waivers, evidence and record demonstrate that the project met the standards for granting waivers under state density bonus law. Next step is that the plant commission's uh recommendation will be forwarded to the city council for a decision on the project and as tentatively scheduled for December sixth of this year. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Um so I think uh Vikram, unless it's urgent, um I'd like to go to the um applicant's presentation before we go to public comment.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, and Moody, is it urgent or can you wait until after the applicant?
No, I I just want to get something out. Uh so um I did meet with the applicant, you know, representative of applicant, you know, last week. I just want to make sure that no pity, you know, you know, in a full disclosure, right? So just to review the plan and, you know, try to understand, you know, the project. I did meet with another applicant uh last week.
Yeah, um also, I've met with the um registered lobbyists of the applicant um as well. And I think um who else has met with the applicant, uh Exparte Communications? Um I believe, yeah, Ray, okay. So three of us have met with, I believe we all met with the registered lobbyist uh that the applicant has hired. Um yeah, so that, yeah, thank you for getting that out there. Um now is the applicant available here to uh do their presentation? Is that Greg?
Good evening, Chair Sharp. Uh my name is Greg Endam, and I'm going to be presenting tonight. I would ask, if possible, that uh my ten minutes be stretched somewhat. I've got a a big project to present to you all, and I don't know that I can get it done effectively in ten minutes.
Uh sure, you can have fifteen minutes. Um yeah, we'll set a timer for fifteen minutes. And yeah, just go as quickly as you can. You don't have to read every item on every slide. Um for sure, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Um the property ownership, when they started this project, uh the redesign, they their their goal was to be able to develop a housing project that uh met the city's housing element, but was able to keep the retail component. And I think that's what you're going to see tonight. Uh we worked really hard to be able to balance both of those. So uh I'm going to try to share my screen and bear with me my technical skills, even with COVID are not the greatest. Let's try this. Here we go. So um we have our our development team here in the same room tonight with the exception of our land use council who was dialed in and can answer any questions. So we'll be prepared to um respond to any questions you may have uh during the presentation during the hearing. Staff has already pretty much gone over the history of the project, so I'm not going to go through this in detail, but I would just I would focus on the changes in market conditions. The the ownership felt that homeownership today is a is a critical uh ingredient to the project. And, you know, we we made that change to the condominiums, both for the residences and for the retail. The retail is also a retail condo uh proposal. Construction costs have, a- as we've seen over the last twenty-four months, been a a challenge, and we've adopted the design to deal with that. And then COVID has changed all our lives, and and it's impacted this project with a question mark of the hotel and what the future of that uh is. Uh we felt housing was a more uh better use and a a more welcome use than the hotel component. So moving forward, uh staff kind of uh preempted me and already gave you a comparison of the uh the past project and what we're proposing. One of the big changes is we went from two levels of underground parking, which was broken up in separate garages, to one level of underground parking that is cohesive and under and underlies the entire site. So it's more efficient uh and um naturally, one level is cheaper to build than two levels. We talked about two hundred and six units versus the one hundred and eighty-eight before. The units are also larger, too. The original proposal averaged about a thousand square feet per unit. Um this is thirteen hundred square feet. And, you know, we feel that this will be more receptive to larger families and also to the empty nesters who have a house in the community, want to stay in the community, but they don't want to have a three thousand square foot house anymore. Now we have some three bedrooms with den units that would uh be more attractive. So that was uh one of the major changes. Staff talked about the thirty-six units compared to the original proposal. And we have forty-one thousand square feet of retail compared to the forty-four thousand that's on site now. These will be retail condos, approximately twenty-two units is what is shown in your uh submittal packet. Uh again, I won't go through this in a lot of detail. Uh we talked about the size of the units being uh a plus and a change, uh giving opportunity for business and homeownership. Um and jumping down, we really worked hard to to introduce as many eco-friendly items as we could. We're proposing that we'll have uh photovoltaic solar on the available roof space. That will help save energy. We're going to have roof gardens on two of the buildings that will be just for homeowners that will give some additional open space options. We'll show later, but we have over overstaffed the project with bicycle uh storage so that there is encouraging uh pedestrian bike options. And then, right now, our lead certification is at fifty-eight points, and that that is silver. We believe that when we're through the working drawing stage, there's a number of items that uh don't get detailed at this level. We will be in firmly into the gold stage, which is at sixty points. So we're excited about that. The project today, uh this is the the views that we're seeing, and and really um, you know, the center was built in nineteen seventy-nine. It was great for nineteen seventy-nine, but um I think what we're proposing is a higher and better use. And also, what we're proposing is going to activate Alves, which right now has no real pedestrian activity whatsoever. It's it's kind of an afterthought, and I think what we're going to show you is going to change that. Uh staff has already showed some of the drawings. This again is looking south on Deanza at the intersection with Alves. And then the flip side is looking at the other end of the street on Banley. So you have your retail component, which will add to the pedestrian and the activation of those streets. On Deanza, I'm not going to talk a lot about architecture. That's that's really not my forte. Our architect is here. The each of the buildings has a center parking garage, but we've got that screened with uh a lot of architectural treatment and a lot of landscaping, so you really don't even realize we have the garage unit there. Going on again, uh the Paseo, this is looking from the Apple Cafe. We had a had a good meeting with our neighbors at Apple, and this was their main question is, what is it going to look like? What are we going to see now versus um, you know, what you're proposing? So this is the Paseo looking down with the retail, and it's really more another view looking uh from the other direction. It's more of a pedestrian-focused streetscape. Uh our landscape architect will speak to uh some of the treatments we're going to use. The the renderings don't bring them out, but we've got different uh crosswalk treatments, uh different heights so that we may have a definite traffic calming through there. And then, you know, the retail shops with a lot of outdoor seating. Again, looking at the plaza, staff uh staff showed this view. This is building B, building A. Here is on the right, and then this is the view looking in from Banley um into the project, building C, and down the at the far end is the plaza. Uh the site plan, um a couple of things we're we're introducing is, one is the community room for the project. We're want to offer that for use by any nonprofits in the city of Cupertino. Uh the sister city folks have expressed an interest. We would, we would make it available to any five oh one-three C nonprofit groups at no charge to be reserved through the HOA. Uh and we've designed it in such a way that there's a glass wall. It's about eight hundred square feet. It has a restroom. But the glass wall could be retracted, and it would open up into the lobby if we needed more space, if you were going to do some type of art presentation or have um gives more flexibility. So that's one of the things we have. The start areas, the purple is the retail. The start areas are are planned restaurant. Most of these have outdoor seating, uh which will again will make it more of a neighborhood feel. There'll be a chance for people to gather. This is not geared towards a big box retail. It's neighborhood, small-scale, local-type, uh daily needs uses. Uh again, this is uh another shot just showing the interior parking within each building on the ground level. We have a distribution of the units. They range from the one-bedroom uh up through a three-bedroom with den, and as I said, they average about thirteen hundred square feet overall. The three bedrooms uh with den are as large as sixteen hundred and forty-nine square feet. Same chart that staff had shown, showing we we work very hard to equalize the distribution of the moderate and median income units interspaced into the market rate, so there's no preference to either one. And this just goes through and shows a sample distribution on the uh first residential level as an idea of how we've um mixed the units in. In the garage, as I said, we had one large garage. We extensively planned for EV charging. Uh two hundred and eight spaces have uh will be EV-ready. And there's also eighty-one spaces in the garage that will be available for retail parking, most likely employees and owners of the retail spaces. So when we when we started talking about the theme of the project and what we could bring to the community, uh one of the principles um in the ownership suggested that we um look to the sister city folks and really try to work with them and bring this into a um an an art and culture experience that we could introduce into and throughout the project. So we've met with the sister city folks. Uh we have a pretty sizable art contribution that's going to come from the project. And our landscape architect will speak to this a little bit more, but what we envision is at the major intersection points that we'll have some major art pieces. And then throughout the interior of the project, on the streets, there will be uh sister city-focused art pieces and also some historical context that will help educate and inform people about sister city, uh the sister city relationship. So with that, I'm going to let uh Jesse Markham go through the landscaping uh plan.
Great, thanks. Um as Greg mentioned, uh we've we've really worked hard as a team to make this urban village a vibrant streetscape uh and a pedestrian experience here. So you you Greg explained the garage, and one of the challenges with the garage is that being underneath a part of this project. So our the heart of this project is our plaza, and it's located outside of that garage. So we can really take advantage of the native soil and have a really uh lush plaza there, both for the residents of this project as well as for the community to gather. Um we've uh choreographed throughout this whole site a a really nice pedestrian experience, street trees for shade. Um Greg mentioned also the planting here, uh drawing from some of the sister cities as well as native plants and appropriate plants for this area. We have uh rain gardens as well to treat stormwater. Uh and so thi- this is the 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 public uh area here, and when we go up a level, uh we get to the residential courtyards. Each of the three buildings has a private residential courtyard uh to provide the open space. They're all a little different. They have amenities. Uh they have trees, planters, little niches for seating, barbecues, um fire pits, things like that. We go up to the roof level, and we have green roofs. This is both helping to treat stormwater. Uh it's um habitat as well as uh provides an opportunity for the residents to come up to the roof level and have a little bit extra amenity to kind of look out over the roof deck and look out over the city. Just a quick example of some of the materials and the furnishings, meeting the city's standard requirements for bike racks and and the trio waste. You can see a little bit of the paving materials we're looking at, some permeable pavers, also to help with stormwater treatment. Uh crosswalks, you know, enhanced concrete or enhanced pavements for crosswalks. Um and then at the bottom, just to give you a sense of kind of the vibe we're trying to create here, both in the plaza, tucked under canopies and and your your gardens, uh and then up against the building for a really activated streetscape. Uh the art experience, which Greg mentioned, that throughout the site so that uh you can really walk through the site and experience the art, you know, understanding the connection to the sister cities. The art itself has not been designed. This is something we'll work with the the Art Commission on. But just an example of the types of things that there might be um out here, everything signs, large sculptures, smaller pieces. But the idea is that you can really wander through the site and explore uh and discover the art that might be out here. This is sampling of the plant palette. Uh you know, we do have native plants, seaanothis, monzanitas, and then also plants that are just appropriate for this area, street trees uh that are applicable and approved by the city. I mean, you can just see a long, large range of colors here, uh bird uh bird um bird pop it pollinated as well as butterfly pollinated plants, which we're really trying to incorporate in. And we will also work with the sister cities to bring some of their plant materials that are appropriate for the Bay Area, bring them into this project as well.
Thank you, Jesse. Um John touched on our community outreach.
So it's been fifteen minutes now. Can you finish up in another couple of minutes?
Sure, yes. Um just a note on our community outreach, the community room idea really bubbled up from those meetings that we had. We talked about the eco-friendly uh items and the EV charging and the bike. I won't belabor that. And John pretty much went through the waivers, so I will not. I had the same slides as John just to explain the waivers. The setback is uh thirty units that it uh allows for the project. The height, another thirty units, and this allows us to add an additional eighteen And this allows us to add an additional 18,000 square foot of retail underneath these buildings A and C. And the open space, while we were a little short on the residential common, overall, the project gives us over an acre of open space and far exceeds the total for the project. So we felt very comfortable about that request. And really summing up, we think the proposal implements the housing policies for the site. And as I said earlier, preserving the retail. We're certainly taking an underutilized property and bringing it to a higher and better use and while providing ownership opportunities and the art and culture with the city. So with that, I would ask for your support and we're happy to answer any questions that come up.
Okay, so before we go to the planning commission for questions, we will go to the public. I'm going to go to the attendees here. So please raise your hand if you'd like to speak as an attendee. Everyone will get three minutes, but please be brief as you can. So far, I see one hand raised and this is, oh, there's two. Okay, Lisa Warren, you are first. Go ahead.
Thank you. So I don't want to forget to bring this up in my three minutes. So I remember being told at a community outreach meeting, which I would guess there weren't that many people that attended, that the CCNRs for this complex or whatever those rules are going to be called would limit the number of non-owner occupied units. And I didn't hear anything about that. And I think that's critical, that there be a limit to the number of non-occupied owner occupied units. Otherwise, it'll be like many places in a city where things are bought and rented out and they're, so they're no longer our ownership by the people who actually live in them. So please clarify that. The height, the request to deviate from what the height is supposed to be, you know, with 1,300 square foot units, the ceiling heights don't really need to and often are very awkward because they make the rooms boxy when it's that square footage and you have high ceilings. There was no mention of the ceiling height that in the report, it's probably in the drawings, but I did not see those earlier. So I would question whether that height limit needs to be a concession or whatever we're calling it. If it means that the ceiling heights are taller than, you know, we don't all need 10-foot ceilings, et cetera. So please ask that question. I worry about the lack of required parking, quote unquote, by the guidelines because retail fails when there's not enough parking, is how I've always been told. Retail needs parking or people go elsewhere if they can't find a place to park. I also question the EV ready parking spaces. I think it was 208 of the spaces are going to be EV ready. I'm not sure that if it's an EV spot, whether a non-EV car is allowed to park there. So that should be clarified. Can a regular gas car be parked in an EV spot? Because if not, you're going to have all these spots that you may not be able to use and the people that want them won't have them. So I'm concerned about some of the waivers. I love that they're disguising the parking garage if that really works out. I had some positive things to say and I want to make sure I say it.
15 seconds.
Okay, I'm really concerned about the oak trees. And I don't know why oak trees are being planted on the street trees throughout the city because they don't seem appropriate to me. These engleman oaks don't really fit this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Jean Gasparini. Did I pronounce your name or is it Jean or Jean? Anyway, you may speak.
Okay, I'm Jean Gasparini. And I'm here speaking for myself, but I'm also a member of the Cupertino Toyacara Sister Cities Association. I think the Plaza redevelopment project will be beneficial to the community of Cupertino. I've been impressed by the project developers' professionalism and the way they're reaching out to the community and to the sister cities as well as the Cupertino Fine Arts Commission. I think the projects will reflect the incorporation of the four sister cities attributes in giving a community focus that is both specific and unique to our community, will also provide needed housing and provide for community gathering opportunities such as a large plaza. And I really like the idea of a community room for the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organizations in the community. So I urge the planning commission to support this community focused project. I think they've done a really good job with their landscaping plans, their bicycle plans, all of the amenities and thoughtfulness into the eco-friendly building approach. Thank you for the time.
Very good. And I'd also like to, you know, thank our former interim city manager, Amy Chan, who is the consultant, because I think she was really responsible for all the reaching out to everyone. And I see her there in the room. You can wave, Amy. So thanks for everything you did on this project. And next, we are on to Jean Bedore. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, planning commission members. My name is Jean Bedore and I'm a resident of Cupertino. I'm here to urge you to approve this application for the Marina Plaza project. I've attended the open houses for the project and have had the opportunity to provide input for the design. This development is particularly senior friendly. These are single floor housing units with upstairs, which makes them accessible for wheelchairs and walkers. The ground level retail will include restaurants and coffee shops, readily accessible to residents without requiring transportation, thus encouraging independence. In addition, Target is immediately adjacent to the site with Sprouts and other retail directly across Stevens Creek Boulevard. Also, this project's within walking distance of our local YMCA, of which I'm a member, and that encourages senior fitness. It also includes bike friendly transportation, including bike lockers. This particular project fills a major gap in senior housing in Cupertino. Many of us live in large family homes, 3,000 square feet and larger, and would like to downsize. We're looking for two to three bedroom units. Seniors aren't interested in one bedroom units after living in large houses. We want to stay in the community, close to friends and medical providers. This project provides the housing we need and makes our big homes available to young families. This was a good project when it was approved in 2016. It's evolved into a better project. Please enthusiastically approve it. Thank you.
Next, we have Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Hi, good evening, Chair Sharp and commissioners. My name is Connie Cunningham, 34-year Cupertino resident. I'm an Audubon member and Environmental Action Committee, as well as being on the Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. I want to thank the staff for this very thorough report and also from the applicant. Except for one major exception, which is the replacement plan for the 92 trees, this is a very good plan and I think it will be an excellent space for 206 new homes. It's a good place for retail, including the grocery tenants. And I think that removing the hotel is good. Our city needs new homes and this project meets several general plan goals. I especially like the idea of senior housing as Jean Bedore just described. 20% of the homes are restricted to moderate income or median income residents, which we super need because of the high cost of housing. Cupertino needs housing at all price ranges. These two price ranges will add to our mix of homes. And the 99-year length of time for the home prices will keep them affordable for a long time. No one project can provide all homes needed and this is a good selection of homes. The major exception to this good proposal is described on page 11 of the staff report. It is the discussion of tree replacement, which gives specifics, but none of the replacements are California native trees, even the oak trees. Why weren't we using coastal oaks or valley oaks or any other kind that grow in our area? I would also ask that the applicant confirm that they plan to adhere to the Bird Safe Design and Dark Skies Ordinance that Cupertino has in place right now. A little bit of background, Cupertino has already established their commitment to the environment with the Bird Safe Design and Dark Skies Ordinance. Cupertino will be adding more projects and homes in coming years. And Cupertino has a robust climate action plan that recognizes the needs for native plants. Although I understand why people would be interested in thematic trees and thematic plants, I would ask that those be kept to a minimum and that we pay more attention to the biodiversity that is plunging throughout the world and which environmentalists around the world are concerned about. I urge you to change the project trees to California native trees that have high habitat value. These trees will create a neighborhood that supports biodiversity. Organizations such as the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society are working to provide cities, home builders and developers with the tools they need to fight climate change using trees, shrubs and grasses as a way to increase biodiversity. Please also do not use turf. Arborists and city planners need to add to their checklist this question. Which ones are native trees and plants? And please, planning commissioners, if you would also add that question to your repertoire. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have San R. Welcome.
Thank you, commissioners. I want to say this is a good project for the city. It is going to provide for much needed housing. It is also going to provide retail, which makes it an attractive destination for residents. We do not have something comparable to the mixed-use retail that we see in the eastern side of the city. So it's nice to see some of this coming closer to the central part of the city and the western part of the city. I do want to however, raise some concern about the amount of retail parking. It feels to me like, as the developer was speaking earlier, they were talking about the retail parking being mostly for the businesses and their employees. And as was mentioned by the earlier speaker, the retail is not going to be a draw for residents if there isn't enough parking. So I urge you to make sure that there is enough parking for retail. In particular, the plans show a few restaurants, which is excellent. We do need more restaurants in Cupertino. So I would urge you to look at what is the max capacity of the restaurants and make sure that there's enough retail parking for the restaurants as well as the retail visitors. I also want to echo the comments of the previous speaker. The parking that is shown seems to be EV parking all through. And I would be concerned that a lot of EV cars are going to occupy the parking spot, what's available, parking available for other non-EV cars. So I would urge you to revisit the amount of EV parking required and make sure that there's enough retail parking available for the properties as well. And finally, I would also urge you to ensure that the retail square footage accommodates small businesses. The Marina is home to a number of small barber shops and coffee shops and so on, which actually add to the culture of that location. It brings in a lot of crowd, it brings in a lot of young crowd and youth and teens. And so I urge you to evaluate the retail to make sure there is a good diversity of small retail square footage so that you can accommodate small businesses in addition to being able to accommodate restaurants and any other anchor tenants that may be required. Thank you for bringing this project to Cupertino. It is exciting to see development here. And it's particularly exciting to see a hotel being replaced by housing and retail. So exciting project, looking forward to your approval on this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I see, Jean, you have your hand raised again, but you can only speak once unless someone else in your household wants to use that. Okay, Jenny, welcome, Jenny.
Hi, thank you. There was a very nice presentation on the Marina. I was actually back in 2016, I went through all the meetings of this. I'm glad that the conflict with the Bank of America driveway has been resolved. That was worrisome. I used that Bank of America, I also used the Chase. This project is in an area that is, I'm going to call it Class A commercial area for Cupertino. Many years ago, there was a Safeway on this site. I used to go there many, many times. There was a large grocery store there. I actually saw one of the night anchors for one of the San Jose news there, 11:00 PM at night. I just wanted to make sure, now, I think I sent a letter to Planning Commission and City Council about this, about the parking. As someone had previously stated, retail parking is a make or break for this city. And I plan to retire in this city. I'm going to be living here for God knows how long I'm going to be on earth. And I don't want to be a really, really old lady driving a car, coming down there to try to go shopping and not have any place to park. I also don't want to trip over an EV cable. I don't want to sound like I'm cross, but a lot of the state bills are making me extremely cross because they are telling me that I shouldn't drive a car. And I'm really getting tired of it. I'm tired now and I'm going to be even more cross five years from now. So I really hope that we make sure. Cupertino knows best. Sacramento does not know best. Cupertino has very high values in terms of their parking. Cupertino understands that people have the right to drive a car and it cannot be meditated by the governor or the president. So I want to make sure that we have a fully parked out commercial area or I will take my shopping dollars and go to West San Jose or Santa Clara where maybe they're welcome. I don't think that a lot of the state officials care about the residents who have lived in the neighborhoods and in the commercial areas, but please overpark it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jenny. Let me go back and see if anyone else has raised their hand. In the meantime, they have not, so we'll close public comment. And we can, if the applicant would like to address the couple of major things that were mentioned by the speakers, such as why the certain kind of trees were chosen and about the situation with the retail parking.
Yes, Chair Sharp, we can definitely do that. Let me let Jesse Markham, our landscape architect, speak to the tree selection and then I'll talk to some of the other issues.
Yeah, thank you. Just noting the oak tree, that was actually requested by the city. So the street trees being provided are in response directly to the city's request. So that's why we're doing those street trees. And as far as other trees and plants, we're certainly very open if there are suggestions for additional natives, but there will be a high percentage of natives on this site. I said earlier, there'll be a combination of things, but lots of native plants, very drought tolerant, and it will make sure it fits well with the city and the environment here.
And the parking, I know we have several mixed-use developments in the city where the retail has all failed because of a lack of parking. So that is a really valid concern in my mind.
Very much so, Chair Sharp. And the property owners of this project are retailers at heart. So they're very keenly aware of the concern of parking. And as staff pointed out in their presentation, we jumped in and took into consideration the potential for the restaurant space to make sure that we weren't shorting ourselves or playing a mind game on how many parking spaces we needed for the overall project. The spaces in the garage that I alluded to for the extra spaces are for overflow. There are 81 spaces to bring owners and employees off of the parking level at the ground level to make those available for customers and so that you have more available there. There was a comment about the EV, there was an excess, I believe, the neighbor said about the EV spaces. These are EV ready. They will be, just like in any residential condominium project, you'll be assigned a space. If you have an EV car, we can make it an EV space. But it doesn't mean that you're But it doesn't mean that you're limited to only park EV cars in those spaces. So um, important difference there. We're very sensitive to the parking. Uh, there was a comment about the heights, ceiling heights in the units. The ceiling heights are eight and a half to nine feet. We're not excessive on the height of the interior of the units. There's no ten, twelve, thirteen foot vaulted ceilings. So I just wanted to address that. Um, the concern about owner occupied, we have not even got to the level of detail for CCNRs. But it's my understanding today that financial institutions will not lend on projects to people to buy units if there's a high percentage of uh, non-owner occupied. So I think that's going to, the marketplace takes care of that concern right off the bat. Um, uh, Jesse spoke to the oak tree selection. Um, I'm just looking to see if there's anything else. Uh, we did include in our packet, uh, three or four sheets to show how we complied with the bird safe design. So yes, we're well aware of that and intend to meet that requirement. Um, we've talked about the parking, we've talked about the uh, the EV. The easements were all res- uh, uh, resolved back in two thousand eighteen and nineteen. So there's Harmony uh, on record among the property owners as far as cross easements and circulation on site, so that was taken care of. Um, I think that um, takes care of it, but we're happy to answer any other questions.
Okay, so yeah, we'll, we'll bring it back to the planning commissioners. I have a ton of questions, but I will not go first. Um, let's see, how about Sanji? You have your, you're listed first here. So um, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, it's a very nice uh, uh, and professionally managed plan. I just want to know a few things about it is that uh, uh, if I have to measure the carbon footprint of this uh, uh, residential complex, how would I do that? I mean, uh, there's going to be two hundred and six uh, units and approximately, let's say, two people per unit. You have like in a four, uh, four hundred and twelve residents minimally with children uh, uh, residing in this. So, and it is surrounded by Deanza on one side and Stevens Creek Boulevard on the other side. Uh, so effectively, there is a quite a, quite a bit of vehicular traffic and pretty busy one on both sides of the things. So there is going to be some level of concern about the pollution and about the uh, for the residents. So how uh, uh, do we measure that? And how, what are the ways we have provision to mitigate that? The second thing I just wanted to also highlight, the, the two streets, Elvis, I think it's called uh, um, uh, uh, Band, Bandla Drive and there's another one, Elvis Drive, right? So there is, once we have a large uh, density of the residential uh, 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 population uh, in a, in a given area, uh, there is going to be a vehicular traffic. And to my knowledge, this Bandley Drive and this Elvis, what is another one which is facing the Apple, Elvis Drive, they are pretty narrow. Uh, they are not as wide as Stevens Creek Boulevard or Deanza or something like that. So once you provide to this building A, B, C, the entrances from there, is there a way to measure that you will be able to, to manage the vehicular traffic which is coming in for the residents as well as for the people who are passing by? And without creating a, a bottleneck on those roads. Uh, uh, that's the, the second thing I, it was clear from the presentation or any metric which you have given in your documents. Um, regarding third thing is that I had, was thinking that uh, that, that your, where are your, the trash disposals for such large residents are built on the corners. And those corners are on, also on a, uh, on a street, which is, how does that impact the uh, the residents as well as the retail? These are the three questions I have. Thanks.
Uh, okay, if the uh, if the developer could answer those as we go along, it would be great so we don't forget all of them. Um, so Greg?
Yes, uh, Chair Sharp, the um, the carb, I, I, I cannot, I cannot with any certainty answer the carbon footprint question. Uh, I know in the uh, report by Placeworks in their analysis, I'll jump down to the traffic uh, item. Uh, there was extensive traffic studies done as part of the new project. And the end result was that there are less trips generated from this project than from the original proposed project. The uh, question about access into the garage, um, there are two accesses into the garage, one off of Alves and one off of the internal Paseo. Um, so, a- and that was taken into effect when the analysis was done as far as uh, trip generation, uh, and, and there was no problems found in. Maybe Chad or John can speak more precisely to this from their consulting standpoint, but um, we didn't see any, any issues coming out of the traffic and especially since it was going to be less trips generated, less vehicle miles than the previous project. The trash collection, we have a very extensive trash collection plan that was formulated by a trash management company. Uh, in the packet of plans that you have, it shows the routes the trucks will take, the collection points within the project and how the trash will get in and out of the project. And it was all calculated down to the cubic foot of uh, compost, uh, recyclables. So um, I can bring those sheets up if it's needed and we can go through the trash plan, but there was a very extensive uh, trash plan that was submitted to staff and they commented through two rounds. So that's been very thoroughly vetted that we know how to get the trash in and out in a way that is uh, safe and effective.
Through, through the chair, I can, you know, we have our, our, you know, Placeworks here to answer the questions about um, environmental issues that Commissioner Capile had brought up. We have Terry McCracken who's um, ready to go.
Okay, and, and who would speak about the uh, you know, the applicant mentioned that the city specified the trees. Who, do we have a city arborist that does that or?
No, Chad Mosley.
Oh, so maybe Chad can speak as to why those trees were selected um, instead of the other tree. I don't know enough about that, but I appreciate what um, Connie Cunningham mentioned as well as others.
Yeah, and I can provide some background to that. Jonathan Ferrante, who is the city's arborist, um, provided recommendations on uh, a few different oak species. Um, the species that were selected, uh, were selected for a couple of reasons. One of them is, is we are trying to provide some diversity uh, in our tree species throughout the city. Um, just due to some experiences we've seen in the past where, you know, you'll have like a certain type of elm in a city and some kind of, of uh, fungus or beetle will come through and ravage all the trees and now the city is basically treeless. So what we're trying to do is provide, you know, oak species that uh, may not be necessarily native, but are still oaks, provide that aesthetic thing, the, the aesthetic features that we want of an oak, but have that diversity to withstand some of these blights that are occurring. So we are trying to diversify our species throughout the city just so that we don't get hammered with blight. Additionally, the, the species that were selected along Deanza um, have kind of a wider canopy, which we believed would help to attenuate some of the noise from the cars that travel up and down Deanza, especially for those residences along Deanza. Um, so those were a couple of reasons why those trees were selected.
Okay, thank you. Um, were there any other questions um, that needed to be answered from uh, from Sanji? I don't believe so. Sanji, did you get all your answers or was there still something else?
Yeah, it would be good to, to get an answer to that uh, 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 the pollution piece to it because of the vehicular traffic on Deanza and the Stevens Creek Boulevard. Uh, because this, this complex is sandwiched between those two extremely busy uh, pathways. And uh, there are two hundred and plus people are going to stay there. So uh, so how healthy and how uh, contaminated uh, environment could be for those set of people and there should be some kind of a metric, I guess.
Yeah, hi, this is Terry McCracken from Placeworks. Um, the, the question that you're asking is really the um, what we uh, commonly refer to as like reverse Sequa. So you're asking about the impacts of the environment on the project, which is not something that we analyze in Sequa. Sequa is interested in the impacts of the project on the environment. So that's why I use the word reverse. Um, and I think what um, with respect to the transportation and impacts from the intersections and from the roadway you're talking about, they can be mitigated. And I, I would need to look into this to see where we are on the map, but the Bay Area Air Quality Management District does maintain um, a map that designates where you are. And if you're in one of these zones that is considered a toxic zone, usually they're along major roadways. And you mitigate that um, by putting in certain level of indoor air quality filters. And so those were not a required piece of the mitigation for this. Um, since we did the twenty sixteen M and D, it's been really clear since the court cases have said it's a reverse Sequa issue. So this would be required under a separate law than the California Environmental Quality Act.
What I, what I could add to this is, you know, I can suggest, we can add, chapter, or chapter seventeen does include language about MIRF filters along these corridors that Terry had explained. Uh, what I would suggest is that if this development is adjacent to one of those corridors, that we would require the applicant to be consistent with chapter seventeen. Um, that they would add some type of, like you said, MIRF indoor filters and whatnot.
And I can, I can look up that map real quick.
Sure.
Okay, and uh, yeah, maybe the applicant can say that they've even looked into this uh, into indoor air filtration on the units that are facing um, Stevens Creek and Deanza. I guess it's mainly Deanza because it's, they're, they're set back from Stevens Creek pretty far. Okay, or not? Jerry, do you have any, anything on that? Are you still there?
Oh, uh, sorry Chair Sharp, yes, we would uh, we're very open if uh, to add. Uh, it's not something that has come up in the past. It wasn't called out in any of the traffic studies that we had done. And so it kind of took me by surprise that we can certainly address that as part of our design criteria.
Okay, very good. Let's move on to Mooney. Go ahead, Mooney.
Okay, so I'm going to need a lot of time. Okay. Thank you. So uh, first of all, uh, thanks to the developer and the staff for bringing up, you know, a plan that's much better than the original plan. So we really appreciate it. Um, let me also go on the record. Housing projects are welcome in Cupertino, okay? I repeat, good housing projects are welcome in Cupertino. This is for people that are writing, you know, some kind of, you know, propaganda, you know, lies about Cupertino, okay? Just want to go on the record. Um, I have some comments and some questions, right? So I'll go through the comments first and then, you know, questions at the end. Um, the construction quality and the architectural design is something that, you know, we all want to be proud of. So I'm not an architect, but I can tell, you know, which ones I want to live in, which ones, you know, I definitely don't want to, you know, live in, right? So, so the ask to the, the applicant is, you know, just make me want to move out of my home to this condo, okay? So, so that's my ask. So. Um, and also I appreciate, you know, the power ownership housing being offered in Cupertino because that is kind of, you know, near and dear to my heart because now I want people to feel proud of, you know, the city that they live in. And I'll say, you know, um, own the house, you know, in the long term where, you know, when they retire, they don't have the mortgage payment or, you know, or rent, you know, they have to pay, you know, when they don't have an income, right? So, so that's where I think, you know, the ownership home comes, plays a very crucial role. So thanks for converting this into a ownership home project. Uh, thanks for keeping the retail element. Uh, given that location, retail is very key. So I see that, you know, you almost kept, you know, the same amount of retail as, you know, what exists there. So we, we really appreciate that. Parking spaces for retail, this is very important. Otherwise, you know, it's a disservice to the retailers. I mean, I, for example, you know, don't go to the complexes where I cannot park, right? So, and I, you know, I, I know very well, you know, which complexes, you know, I can go and find a parking and which ones, you know, I just don't even want to bother going there. So please make, take care of, you know, your retail tenants by providing an adequate parking. Uh, I presume, you know, the parking entrances are on the Alvis and, you know, Bandley streets. Is that the case? Nothing is entering on the Deanza side and Stevens Creek side, right?
One entrance, one entrance is on Alves and one is off the internal street.
That's Bandley, right?
No, the internal street on the project, so.
Okay, okay, okay.
So there's no entrances off of Deanza or Stevens Creek into the garage.
Okay, what, what about Bandley? Is, is there an entrance? No? Okay, okay, that's good. Okay. So all, all the entries are from Alvis, okay. Um, I saw a table that said, you know, the BMR unit, you know, the average size and all that. So I presume, you know, if you do the multiplication, the square footage of all the BMR units combined, you know, is proportional to, you know, what we expect that to be, like twenty percent, right?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that because, you know, I, you know, it's a disservice, you know, to people when BMR units are, you know, micro units and, you know, on the far market rate here, units are much bigger. So I really appreciate, you know, you guys taking care of that, you know, making sure that, you know, the BMR units are same size as some of the market rate units. Um, this is probably the biggest question. Can we look at, you know, increasing building B to five stories and get more BMR units, you know, with some kind of, you know, grants and funding from other sources? Like, because that's a great opportunity. The other two buildings are, you know, five, five story high and this one is, you know, four story high. I, I feel that, you know, we are missing an opportunity there. This is an ask for the staff to see, you know, if that can be explored. That way, you know, we can increase, you know, the affordable housing stock in Cupertino. Uh, also, next question to the staff. What's the height of the corner building that's, you know, ten thousand one, not the Deanza Boulevard? That's uh, the staff is building, so is that taller than the, what's being proposed here?
I, I believe it's, it's actually shorter because I think it's three stories, so uh, I don't, I don't know for sure how, how tall it is, but it appears to be shorter.
Okay, so the one at, at the corner of, you know, Stevens Creek and Deanza?
The brick one, correct?
The brick, the ugly building, yeah.
Yeah, that one. It, it used to be ten micro. I think, you know, now Apple is occupying it, okay? Um, so that, you're saying, you know, that's shorter, okay? Um, let's see, feedback from the community, solid and good, so. The community room that's being offered for five oh seat threes, um, is there an, is that free or is it nominal fee? There is a nominal fee for it?
No, it's a, it's the existing community room for the project that residents can reserve. And it would be available for five oh one three C at no cost.
At no cost, okay. And does the five oh one C three, does it have to be, you know, Cupertino based or no, anyone from anywhere in the Bay Area?
Well, no, our, our preference at this point of what we propose, that it would be limited to uh, five oh one three C nonprofits within the city of Cupertino.
Within the city of Cupertino, okay, that's key. Okay, that's good, thanks. Um, the EV charging, right? So is that some kind of a commercial vendor installing EV charging there or is it all like, you know, the property? So is that some kind of a commercial vendor installing EV charging there or is it all like, you know, the property owned and, you know, the community won? Uh, EV chargers?
I would envision, this is very early on in the design process, but I would envision that the garage for residences. Would be installed by the project and as part of the HOA administration. And that the retail, we have fifty four EV ready spaces for retail that would be up at the garage. Uh, at the street level, those potentially, I would see those being subcontracted to someone who does that business.
Okay, okay, so the the retail ones would be, you know, some commercial, uh, charging vendor.
EV go or yes.
Whatever, but 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 the ones, you know, for residences that would be, you know, the HOA HOA won one.
Yes.
Okay, last, uh, this one on same on the EV charging. Why not make, you know, every parking spot a EV chargeable parking spot so that way, you know, we don't have to worry about, you know. Gas cars parking here and, you know, the EV cars, you know, parking there, so that way, you know, there is a flexibility and no restriction.
With the with the way that the regulations and the market is going. That certainly would be the easiest solution. But I would tell you from the meetings we've had with our electrical engineers. You end up, you end up having a huge amount of, uh, electricity provided amps. When you equip every space or you plan to equip every space with an EV charger and we're already at a point. Where, um. Uh, the 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 amount of electricity required just for the two hundred and eight spaces. That we have in the garage is is. Excessive and so we're we we're getting squeezed in the whole infrastructure of of supplying that much juice. For that many spaces in the garage.
Okay.
If we could do it, uh, we would love to do it, it's just it's becoming a a technical challenge.
Okay, is it the electrical capacity issue?
Yes.
Mister Chair, may I step in? This is counsel for the applicant and and add a little.
Oh, sure, okay.
Yeah, there's been a lot of questions about EV charging, so there's just one point that I want to clarify and that's. Um, the the spaces are being made EV ready, which means that they're. Um, they're set up, the building is built to allow for EV charging in the future. Um, and that's pursuant to, uh, first of all, the state's green building code requires a certain number of spaces be EV ready. And your city has a local amendment to the building code that that's called a reach code that goes further than the green building code. That's why the spaces are being offered this way and the reason behind those codes is that as more and more people. You know, if you build a building today, it's meant to be around for a century, you know, approximately. And more and more people are purchasing electric vehicles every day. And so if we're building this building for the future, there will be a time in the future when. Uh, that many more people are driving electric vehicles. We want the building to be built now to accommodate the future need. So that's why the applicant's offering this because it's required to understand local law and and so that we can accommodate future needs. Uh, so since so many questions have been asked about the EV charging, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Right, remember the, um, now the state requirement, I think twenty thirty five, they won't even be selling gasoline powered cars. And, uh, this building's gonna be around a lot longer than twenty thirty five.
So 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 given that, you know, it makes sense, you know, to almost have every spot to be EV charging spot, right?
Correct, and I I point out that not. Every EV charger needs to be on at the same time either, you know.
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
You know, it can be sequenced.
Yeah, if you can manage the load, where only like, you know, fifty percent of the cars are charging at any given point in time or whatever. But every spot is, you know, provisioned for EV, that would be great, so that way, you know. We can avoid this issue of, you know, I can't park here and I'll have to go and look for a parking somewhere else because I have a gas car, right? So, okay, last question, so, uh, are there any protected trees, large trees that are being, you know, brought down? Because that's the only comment that I heard from some resident, like, you know, concerned about, you know, large trees being brought down, so. Can we do anything, you know, to protect them? That's more of a question to the staff.
I, yeah, I I can start answering and then if the project, uh, landscape architect was to jump in, from from what we can see, there's no large tree. Similar to what was at the Oaks that that's being taken out, uh, that, I mean. Of course, they're always worth to be protected, but, you know, of course, you know, the, you know, we protect every tree we can't build out. Uh, but nothing that would say would suggest that there's something, some massive oak on site or massive redwood that is.
Okay.
Culturally significant.
Let let me just chime in on that too, and that's correct, we are taking out some what you the city would classify as ordinance. Ordinance sized trees there are, but we're talking about pine trees that are in decline for the most part. Some of the really large trees, there's some really large tilia trees that we did design around, we are not taking those out. And we're putting in much more, many more trees in our onsite, so I think in the end, we're gonna end up with a better urban forest than we have now.
Okay, okay. So so of the trees which fall in the category of a large trees, how many we we are taking downwards and how many we are keeping?
Uh, we're, we are taking out all of the trees that are onsite in the way of the building, as I said, there are several trees. Around the perimeter which we were able to work around, but everything within the footprint of the project we are removing. We we have a giant subterranean garage and so we cannot save.
Okay, yeah, so so the 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 trees around the periphery are being protected, but the trees in the middle are going away.
That that's correct, e- except for the street trees that are on Alves. Uh, there are some, uh, kind of low quality magnolias. Um, that are in tiny little tree wells and we're taking those out and we're gonna place them with trees to match what's on the other side of the street. So it'll be a much more cohesive streetscape in the end.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you, Chair Sharp, I'm I'm good.
Okay, next we are on to Commissioner Saxina, go ahead.
Uh, thanks, Stephen, uh, and thank you for the city staff and the developer for the proposal. Uh, I really, really appreciate the fact that it is for ownership or not rental. Um, I think that one big challenge with for rental properties prop thirteen related issues. Um, and, uh. With the with the condos and so on, we over time will have, uh, some more turnover. Um, I think the the second thing is, uh, about, uh, the. The fact that many of the homes are senior friendly. Uh, I think, uh, a couple of the residents also mentioned that and, uh, we I really appreciate that. Um, the third thing is that, uh, we have a single level parking and the parking seems to be reasonably adequate for the. Uh, for the traffic we expect and the residents we expect. And, uh, I think, uh, I really appreciate fact, two level parking lots are a mess, just trying to find a parking spot and so on. Uh, and I hope there is, uh, enough way to guide, uh, people to find the right parking spot. Um, using some modern tech, including, uh, the lighting and so on. So people don't have to go around in the garage, uh, looking for a parking spot. So if it's not there, that would be a suggestion I would request the city to add. Um, the, uh, the other thing which I wanted to know more about was the EV thing, okay? Um, as we know, uh, California is requiring only EV cars, uh, in just more than over a decade. And hopefully this building will be around for more than, um, for a long time. Now, I heard the developers representative talked about the fact that the infra needed to have every, um, every point charging. Uh, it's not ready or it's it it stresses the systems a lot. And, um, I personally would like to, uh, get some more knowledge about that, uh, and, you know, some more technical details. I'm a double E B training on on what that is and, uh, whether the city has any plans on. Uh, working with PD and E or other folks to help, uh, address those issues going forward. Um. The last thing, and I think the prime, the big question I have is on the setback requirement, the ten feet one. And I'd really appreciate if, you know, um, Gian, if you or somebody else could zoom in into see what is the neighboring a lot? And how does that look and feel? Uh, I know we sort of probably covered it, but I'd like to revisit that because I think. But to me, that is the one big question mark in my mind, whether the ten feet setback is enough. Uh, both from, um, for multiple perspectives, from safety, uh, is ten feet enough for a fire truck to come in there? Uh, if needed, or maybe that's not the fire route, so it's not needed. Uh, second thing is in terms of, um, the sunlight and ventilation if the other building is very close. And finally, from the aesthetics point of view, so if you could dig deeper into that.
Uh, yeah, you know, I let me share my screen really quick, um. Let me know if you can see this.
Yeah, we see it.
Okay, so the ten foot area would be ten foot setback right here, which is adjacent to the. Um, parking lot, underground parking lot entrance of the neighboring office building. So, you know, even with the the minimized setback, um, there, you know, there'd be no wide air issues over the. Of a building or anyone walking over there, it's 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 a pretty wide gap, uh, between the. The building on the southern end and, um, and and the proposed structure.
Mm hmm, and, uh, this won't be a fire lane, I presume?
Yeah, yeah.
Area around that.
Mm hmm, yeah.
Uh, okay, okay, um. And, uh, thinking forward, how will that impact the right of the the plot owner, which who's there currently now on the other building? Uh, will they, like, does that in the future, if they want to redevelop, what would we tell them about this?
Well, um, you know, I, you know, this, you know, the the ten foot setback comes in as a waiver as part of a density bonus ordinance, you know. If this, if the project to the south is not a density bonus project and they don't request it, you know, it's just, um. You know, they, we, we, they would have to abide by the ordinance as written without any waivers.
Okay. But down the line, they could ask for a density bonus and also get close to the robbery line, okay?
Potentially, you know, I guess that that would have to be looked at a case by case basis.
Yeah, uh, I think that's my, uh, my only concern here that, uh, you know, while I'm very supportive of the project overall. Uh, that when we give the waivers and we give those things that also impacts the ability of the next door neighbor to develop their property. Uh, did we hear any feedback from them on this?
No, no comments have come into staff from, uh, any of the neighboring properties actually.
Okay, okay, good, so at least, uh, uh, you know, they're not raised it, but, you know, to me, that is one, uh, area of concern. And they do get the communication from the city about this development and everything, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, awesome.
Uh, uh, and I think, and I'd love to get more information about the electricity load part of part of thing. Um, whether the developer has it or if somebody else has it, uh, that would be good to understand. But like, what exactly are the constraints there and how do they impact any future development? Because we're not that far away from every car being electric, uh, hopefully, uh, pretty soon. Yeah. All right, I'm done.
Mute, very good, uh, we're moving on to Commissioner Wong, welcome, Ray.
Hey, thanks a lot, Chair, thanks a lot, city staff for the presentation and the, uh, and the team presenting for the Marina project. Um, I have a couple of questions, I think most have been answered by my fellow commissioners, uh, for questions. Um, I think I want to go back to the question around, um. Uh, really around the restrictions on occupancies and, uh. I I know earlier in this, uh, in conversations in the past, I think there was, uh, some touting of having a having a high owner occupancy rate. Um, in terms of owned, uh, as opposed to rental units. Um, that's something I just want to check with the city attorney, that can be limited, uh, if on our end as well, right? We can place restrictions for that, uh, just want to double check.
Yeah, Michael?
Yes.
I have the exact same questions, this is.
Yeah. Um, you know, there's actually nothing in our code that would authorize any sort of limitation or restrictions on on those properties. Uh, typically restrictions on rental are regulated by CCNRs, which are governed by state law. Uh, and again, I'm not aware of anything in our code that would allow us this authority, I'm not aware of any precedent that supports, uh, an owner occupancy requirement.
Okay, good to know, um, yeah, because there could be a number of large cash buyers, uh, given the neighborhood. Which would then allow for the financing to to kind of be skewed. Um, we do really want to encourage owner occupied housing and and that's something to to list there. Um, I have a question around the, uh, tree aspect. And I think for the tree aspect, I think was, I was trying to figure out, um, whether we should probably make a recommendation from the. From the planning commission on the tree species and the amount of native plantings, uh, to be considered by council before the presentation. And maybe something our fellow commissioners can think about as we get to the vote stage. Um, on the parking side, um, I do want to know, John, if, um. The, what would be the right retail parking without the density bonus? Um. Concessions, uh, that we should have for retail above ground, um.
A great question, you know, the density bonus, you know, the density bonus standard of reduction of parking only applies to the residential portion. So they're actually overparked, you know, per our ordinance, so our ordinance states that the the ratio is one to two fifty. And so they're providing about, you know, quite a bit more, um, as stated.
They seem to have more than what's required for the retail number because I I think we're getting a number. There was some confusion that we didn't have enough parking, it seems like there's enough on the retail over, like, surface parking.
Yeah, 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 because they're because they're projecting a certain amount of restaurant uses that might go beyond it to one to two fifty, so that was the rationale for providing one.
The comments by, um, uh, Commissioners, uh, Saxino actually got me to thinking about, uh, how we are using electrical loads. And, uh, how our reach codes are are impacting this. Um, if we all do move to electric vehicles and we do get to those loads, uh, we will not be able to power, we do not have the energy capacity in the state. Uh, to power, uh, the number of vehicles here, uh, which leads us to, uh, CMC sixteen fifty four dash one, uh, dot one hundred. Uh, two A, which is our reach code on gas stoves. Um, and does the applicant plan to file an exemption to allow gas as an option for heat, uh, and ranges and cooking, uh, for. Um, for the, um, properties as needed? Um, I'm just saying because, you know, power goes out, you guys are all dark done, right? You can't cook, you can't heat, you can't, I mean, you're you're out. But but I know the environmental implications, people are talking about this and and I do understand, uh. You know, having a good vent will solve most of the questions, but, you know, there there's a push. This is really not going to take out a lot of the footprint and then, of course, it seems like there's enough gas for the restaurants to cook with as an exemption, so just making sure that's there for the potential restaurant owners.
So you're right, Commissioner Wong, the the applicant does have the the choice to to file for an exemption with our building official for, um, for the gas. And I think that, um, the applicant has started that process already, uh, particularly for the, um, the restaurant portions of the retail. Um, uh, areas, uh, for the gas exemption and, you know, and and that's something that, you know, prior to issues of building permits that, you know. Our building official will will make a final determination on. Um, just one clarification, you know, this, you know, the EV parking standards and the other standards, um, that, um. Go under the umbrella of of the reach codes have already been reviewed by, uh, our sustainability division. Um, the amount of EV parking was actually mandated by our, um, by our sustainability coordinator, uh, Andre DeVort. Um, and, you know, we've had that conversation with Placeworks as well as, uh, Mister Endem and and his team about placing that many EV capable, EV ready, uh, stations.
Yeah, one of the remedies that I've been seeing in, uh, different, uh, buildings across the country is is really a a valley service for the, uh, electric vehicles. That way you don't have to have that many chargers and you can actually move cars around, uh, as needed, uh, which gives you a a better capacity, something for the applicant to think about. That way you won't have to, uh, you know, incur the cost of, uh, too many six hundred amp breakers, which are not fun to find. As you probably have discovered, those are very, very expensive, uh, but yes, uh, one one thing there. Um, I do have a couple of other items real quick, um, and I think these are just related to just internal stuff on our end. Um, one of them is really, um. Yeah, will we be enforcing the RV parking and random trucks that seem to be parked everywhere on Bandley and elsewhere? Um, as we get residents there, uh, in place, because I think parking is gonna be become more of a premium. Um, is that something, Chair, who do we direct that to, so?
Um.
I I can. I mean, that that is a good question, um, and I do believe, um. The city council at one, pre-COVID, we had started talking about, um, RV parking ordinances, we kind of dropped that. During COVID and, uh. Hopefully the future city council will, you know, will take that up again. But I'm sorry, who else was, who else was responding on that?
That was just me asking.
Okay, okay.
And and do we have a, do we have pricing per square feet estimates for these, uh, for sale units, uh, in place at all, um, to the applicant, Greg and team?
Greg, can you unmute and, you know? Do you have any? do you have any idea of the market rate price and uh?
Our Chair Sharf and Commissioner Wong, at this time, we don't, we don't envision the units coming to market probably for two years. And so um that has not been a focus uh of our research at this point.
Well, I mean, for any basic economic economic calculation, I would imagine there was some kind of target for price per square foot. You have a cost per square foot. You should you should have a rough idea of the price per square foot. Just curious, I was just throwing it out there to know. Um, okay, um, in general, I'm very supportive of this project. I think it's important. I'm glad that we've gone to more um owner occupied for sale housing. Uh, back to some of the points, it helps with our school districts on turnover and for Prop thirteen funding. Um, I think it's important that we've actually increased uh and we've kept the amount of retail space. A lot of these mixed use projects uh cut the retail space uh at the expense of city tax revenues and quality of life for residents. Uh, I think there's been a lot of things that you've done on the eco side, especially uh being two points away from a gold lead certification that are great uh for the city. Um, I think it's wonderful that uh you've thought through um a lot of the outreach. I I found the interactions to be professional across the board. I think it's been good outreach. Uh, I think people are looking for larger units. And I I think a good number of individuals are going to take advantage of Prop nineteen sixty forty to be able to move their tax base. So I think you're going to see maybe a a bigger demand for larger units uh than smaller units. So something to think about as you look at your allocation over time. Uh, and then, of course, uh, I I think the most important piece here really is the fact that, you know, we we are building more housing here in Cupertino. And I agree with Vice Chair Padipatla um for developers. Uh, Cupertino is open to uh building and partnering with uh developers who have good intent, who have good faith, and uh really look forward to uh building housing projects that the city uh looks forward to and has good input. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Ray. Um. Okay, I'm going to go before Vikram. You still have you still have your hand raised, but I'll I will go first. Um, okay, first of all, Jennifer Griffin, it was an alpha beta, not a safe wing there, just to correct that. Um, I had a question for the applicant. Is there any idea of what percentage of restaurants versus what percentage of actual retail you would be doing?
The Chair Sharf, the plan as it stands now, there's about forty one thousand square feet of total retail restaurant. And of that, the plan that we submitted in the parking we calculated for has about fifteen thousand square feet of actual re uh restaurant uses.
Okay, so the other twenty six K would be?
It would be daily needs retail.
Okay, wonderful.
Small to medium sized, couple of thousand square foot spaces uh retail.
Okay, let's see, you already mentioned solar. I won't ask that. How about a gray water system? Is there any plans for that considering our water needs in this area?
We have talked about it at a very high level, but uh that was really something we were going to dive into in the construction drawing phase.
Okay, because you know, this would be, I know when it's rental housing, um, it's an issue because um generally it's not individually metered, but you know, for condos, you know, it's still an issue because everyone will be paying for their own. All the condos are individually metered. Is that for water, right?
Correct.
Okay, um. The next question, so you, there's a couple of things I had about bicycles. So you mentioned electric car charging pretty often. Um, what about electric bicycle charging in the garage? Because lately I've been seeing a lot of reports of uh electric bicycle fires and they end up uh starting a fire and destroying a whole building. So it'd be great if the bicycle parking in the garage also had outlets available for chargers. If not, these are not high current chargers, you know, maybe five or ten amps. But I have you thought at all about putting that in in the garage?
Uh, not until this minute, but I think that's a a worthy suggestion. And we'll definitely look at that, especially in the lockable bike storage that we will be having.
Okay, and then more about bicycling. Uh, you mentioned city requirement for bike racks. But you know, one issue we keep seeing on next door is bike theft at places like Target and other retailers. And at the library, uh, we did put in some secure bike parking. It's a company called Bike Keep out of San Francisco. So it's super secure. You can't cut the lock. And that it would be really nice for the retail area if we had some kind of secure bike parking, either lockers or these secure bike racks. So, you know, it's not in our code, but I would hope that you can consider doing that. It's not, it's not a lot of money.
But we we could certainly look at doing the more secure bike uh parking and see if it fits into the street escape environment.
Okay, yeah, you can go over and look at what's at the library and um community hall. There's two sets of racks over there. Unfortunately, they're not heavily used, even though we have bike thefts at the library. I was hoping more people would use the secure parking, but it's not happening yet. Um, okay, so and so I presume in the garage, it's going to be all, there'll be sprinklers in the garage as well, right? For fire protection with all that E with all that EV charging going on. And then finally, the other thing, it was mentioned by Lisa Warren and also by Ray. You know, it's true that a bank doesn't like to lend if more than fifty percent of the units um are not owner occupied. But as we've seen lately, there's a lot of cash deals and I would hate for some real estate investor to come in and say, I'm going to buy every one of these condos and turn them into rentals. And then we're back to where we were before. And we have a building full of two hundred and six or mi- minus the uh BMR, which must be owner occupied. Um, we have we have a bunch of uh rental units. So I, you know, I I understand what the city attorney said. We don't have any regulation like that. But it would be wonderful if the CCNR for the HOA had some kind of a limit on um the percentage of units that could be turned into rentals. I wouldn't say, you know, to absolutely forbid it, but it would be good to have um some limit on that because a lot a lot of times the mortgage isn't even an issue anymore. You have people coming in with huge amounts of cash, buying everything up and then turning it into rentals. And I would I would hate to see that happen here. Um, I I don't know, city attorneys, is it even legal that the city could pass a regulation like that?
Um. I I I know for for we could pass regulations for short term rentals, um, you know, uh.
Well, we already do, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, okay, very good. Uh, okay, so I, let me scroll up through my questions. Uh, that's it. I'm, you know, I'm thrilled that we're getting twenty percent BMR instead of, I think this project actually was pre Palmer's decision. We only got ten, if I recall correctly. Um, so it's great that we're uh getting so much um housing with twenty percent BMR. Uh, I will miss Marina Foods and I hope that the owners can find a new location for that supermarket um in the future.
And and they're same size as, you know, the market rate units. That that's fantastic.
Yes, that that is good as well. Um. Okay, so I don't see any other hands raised. If anyone has anything, oh, wait, there goes uh. Um, Sanji, go ahead, Sanji.
Uh, just wanted to check on the uh children playground and the park related area for the two hundred and six units which you are providing. And second thing is that uh uh what are the schools of pri- uh primary as well as the middle, middle I know is a probably the close one. But uh I wasn't sure that where the children for these households will be going, to which schools they will be going. Uh, these two questions, I think, if I uh need to know, it's not very clear to me that there is any children playground in this complex or anywhere nearby.
Uh, really, yeah, the the project's not required to provide a a playground, just common open space for um the, you know, the the residents as well as the commercial uses. Um, but they will will have to pay um um park impact fees, which I which I think Chad um could probably explain better if 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 needed. Um, I'm not quite sure which school this would draw from. Um. But I think uh if I if I can recollect it, I think the elevator would go to Garden Gate, I believe.
It'll be Lawson Middle and um Monavista High School. I would presume it would be Garden Gate.
Garden Gate, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. So, oh, yeah, one thing I forgot, is there any um recreation facility in this building, like a gym? I get presume there's no swimming pool. Um, but what's planned in terms of amenities for the homeowners there?
I I can let the applicant describe in further detail the the could the combined amenities. Uh, there is a rooftop common community open space that will be on each uh each building as well. Um, Greg, can you clarify um if there's a gym amenities including each building?
That there is no, there is not a gym. There's the rooftop gardens. And then there's the center courtyards in each building, which will have barbecues and seating and gathering places. And then we have the community room as well that can be used by the residents. Uh, but we did not carve out space. We we decided we wanted a community room as opposed to having a a fitness facility with uh YMCA in the area. We felt that would be um take care of the workout side of.
Okay, and there's no pool in any of here, right?
No, no pool.
Okay. Okay, so if there's no more questions.
No mandatory pickleball court? I'm just kidding.
Uh. Chair Sharf?
Yeah.
So Building B, uh, making that five story and getting leveraging that for more housing?
Yeah, so I I can't really say much about that, other than um there was some looking into something like that. Um, and with outside entities and it it did not come to fruition.
Yeah. To me, if there is one ask on this project, that's the only ask that I have, right? So uh because it it just it's it would be a missed opportunity, right? When the other two buildings are, I don't know, five stories and this one four story and uh.
Well, yeah, maybe the applicant can comment because I, you know, uh, I I don't want to say anymore personally, so.
Uh, Chair Sharf, I can I can briefly comment and then I'll throw the ball to John. Uh, we did look at uh the five story option for Building B. But I believe the general plan limits us as to densities. And it would require a general plan amendment, should we want to add that additional amount of units. Um, and so and our Eric, our counsel, who is, I think, still on, can also speak to this. But uh it was looked at early on, but because of uh the city regulations, uh, it wasn't feasible. We found it.
Yeah, I I had mentioned this to the project consultant a long time ago and saying that I thought the city council would probably be amenable to a GPA for that. But apparently that takes a long time and the project would be uh delayed if that was considered. But yeah, Eric, you can comment further on that if you wish.
I mean, I don't don't know that there's more to add. The city controls the density for the site and with the density bonus that um is is being provided, this is the maximum density allowed.
Right, okay. Yeah, so Mooney, I think that, you know, they they could come and submit a GP, you know, or go through the gateway process and ask for a GPA, you know, if they wanted to change that. And, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but even if even if and when this is approved tonight, um you could still come back and uh modify it like, you know, if you if you wish.
Yeah, yeah, I I I I'm I'm all for, you know, approving as submitted, but that is my ask, you know, if they want to come back, you know. And uh even city council to consider, that would be my recommendation that, you know, that they consider that option.
Okay, thank you. Um, okay, Mooney, I'm going to lower your hand here. And now we can, um, let's see. We can have a motion now.
Are are we having some more discussion or we done on this?
Unless I don't see any more hands raised, if you want more discussion.
Well, Chair, if there's no more questions, you can close the hearing and then and then move after the discussion, have a motion, have a further discussion.
Okay, um, all right, so I will close this. Oh, wait, Vikram. Okay. I will close this public hearing and um, yeah, we can make a motion. We can discuss it further after the motion as well. Um, so uh, let's see, go back to the agenda here.
As you're making your motion, Chair, uh, I I would like to just make the suggestion on the recommendations for uh trees um to to be part of that, so.
So why don't you make the motion, Chair Wong, and you can add that in?
I have been blocked out of any access to anything on the Cupertino site to be able to pull up an agenda. So if someone could tell me exactly what we're, I know it's exempt from CEQA and blah, 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 but I I I if you can make the motion.
Uh, fine, okay, I'll make the motion.
The security is really good here, so.
That we adopt the first addendum to mitigate negative declaration and approve the development permit DP twenty twenty two dash oh oh one, which is attachment one. Approve the architectural site approval permit ASA twenty twenty two dash oh oh two, which is attachment two. Approve the vesting tentative map TM twenty twenty two dash oh oh three, which is attachment three. Approve the tree removal permit TR twenty twenty two dash oh twenty six is attachment four. And um city attorney, do I have to mention that that this is exempt from CEQA?
It's uh through the chair, uh, really quick. It's well, it's not exempt from CEQA.
It's not exempt, okay.
Yeah, uh, but I I do want to add some potential conditions just based upon the feedback from the commission, if that's okay? If I share my screen, um.
Um, okay, go ahead.
So a couple of conditions. Um, one was that uh to memorialize the use of the community room as described by the applicant by communities, um, five oh one C three organizations, community meaning like the local uh community Cupertino communities, five oh one C three uh organizations, and this could be done through the CCNRs, um, the CCNR condition. Um, and the other one is that uh prior to issues of building permits, comply with the appropriate managed indoor air pollution requirements from chapter seventeen point oh four. Of course, we will craft these conditions a little more professionally, but you know, this, I think this is just a well um based upon what uh comments have come, um, we think would be a good add.
Um, I would say replace community with um five oh one C threes that are registered in Cupertino.
Okay.
Yep, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, that would make sense. And then and then add, take a recommendation that the planning commission uh that the tree species and amount of native plantings be considered by council before their presentation, so.
Okay, so you want to add that, Ray?
A friendly amendment to that.
Okay, friendly amendment that we um.
But I'll second and give you a friendly amendment. I think that's the right order, so that, Michael, we have a.
We'll also add in the uh um things that John Matera mentioned, but change community to Cupertino to Cupertino registered five oh one C threes. Um, was there anything else there? All right, so you were going to second it, Ray?
I'd like to second.
Okay.
Um, in terms of friendly amendments, do we want to talk about the additional uh the planning commission being open to the additional units with the GP amendment?
I don't know if that's appropriate here. Um, you know, we've stated in the city council um can consider it, but I mean, would that be appropriate to put in here, Michael, to in?
It's it's at the discretion of of this commission to to make that as a recommendation for the council to consider.
I would I would suggest putting that in there.
Okay, fine. So the other amendment is to recommend that the city council consider a general plan amendment to increase the density. So which building was it? So which building was it, Ray? Building?
Building B.
Building A can be, building B can be taller. Of course, this is up to the applicant to decide whether they wish to make that GPA application. Okay. Anything else? Okay, Ray, you seconded, so we can have further discussion or we can move directly to a vote if no one else has anything to say. Okay.
I just wanted to ask one more thing was about the lighting fixtures and all those things, is there a plan to use some of the technology available rather than depending on the grid, like solar and things like that? So is there a similar, things have been thought about for, not only for lighting fixtures, but also other, other eco-friendly smart fixtures? It's a question to the probably to the applicant.
Greg, do you have anything about that, about the lighting fixtures? I'm not sure exactly what the question.
Yeah, Chair Sharf, we would intend to use the latest technology available. We're voluntarily adding the photovoltaic solar throughout the roof areas. And so it would just make sense to continue that philosophy where we could with lighting fixtures or any other energy using devices.
Right, so the photovoltaic is not to provide electricity to the individual unit, it's for the common areas and garages?
That's correct, that's correct.
Right, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's one trade off with high density housing. You cannot have the energy efficiency of a, of a single family home in terms of solar power generation. But yeah, that is a trade off, so. All right, I think we have the motion, the amendments, we're ready to vote now, we have a roll call. Who is doing the roll call?
I can help with that.
Okay, go with you.
Sure, Commissioner Capello?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Saxena?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Aye.
Vice Chair Mari Padla?
Yes.
Chair Sharf?
Aye.
Motion carries five out.
Yay. Okay. We are on to old business where there is none, new business, none. Thank you for the modification to the agenda to specifically state none, so we don't try to discuss things we should not be discussing. And now we are on to staff and commission reports. Does anyone have anything they would like to say, any meetings they attended? Vikram, you have your hand raised?
Actually, I wanted to talk about the future agenda items, but I don't know if you're going to be talking about that later.
Oh yeah, that's after staff and commission reports. Okay. Yeah, I can't think of anything. Okay, so we are on to future agenda setting. Okay, Vikram, you have something?
Yeah, I wanted to get an update and actually put on an agenda about the student generation ratio impacts, which we've been discussing for the previous meetings. We had a work item for that and I wanted to get a report on that as soon as possible. Even if it says no progress, but, and you know, just to get a sense of understanding of what efforts the city had taken and what response we have received from CUSD.
Yeah, I mean, Q, I don't think we've received anything from the school district on that, have we?
No, the only thing we have is their student, their report. But other than that, that's not something that we can discuss right now in any case.
Right, I, you know, we can put this on the agenda, I do have a spreadsheet from several years ago that we could use. It was done for a different project, but it's based on the type of units rental or for sale and the size, so I could try to dig that up. It won't be from the schools, but the original one was from the schools, so it actually is from them. So yeah, maybe we can put that on the agenda if I can find that report. Anything else for future agenda?
I'm just checking on the status of our 5G conversation, that's all. That's an ongoing question, so.
See, is Chad still here? I guess not, okay. Yeah, that would be interesting considering what's transpired in Los Altos. Okay, seeing nothing else, is there anything else before we adjourn? I'm not going to unadjourn, so. All right.
Thank you.
We are adjourned, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Sharf.
Good night.
Good night.